Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the May 28th city council meeting. Hope everybody had a safe and enjoyable Memorial Day and I hope you took an opportunity to attend the service or at least have a moment of silence. I know the National Moment of Silence was set for 3 o'clock yesterday and it just gives us an opportunity to sort of pay homage to the servicemen and women who did not survive their service to our country, so we're grateful for those individuals. All right, our pastor has not shown up, so luckily we have a pastor in residence here, our city manager. If you'd push your button, sir, Isaiah Hughley will lead the prayer this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to each of you. If you will pray with me according to my faith tradition, this is truly another blessed day, a great day the Lord has made. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you right now with thanks in our hearts. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for our lying down last night and awakening us this morning, clothed in our right minds, that we would be able to gather here this morning. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for your grace and mercy. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the many things we often take for granted, our family, our wife, our loved ones, our friends, for all of these things that we often take for granted, Heavenly Father. We pause right now to say thank you. And Heavenly Father, we thank you for our great city. We thank you for our leaders, our mayor, our city council members, our department heads, and all of our employees of this government. We ask that you continue to bless each and bless our families and continue to guide us and give us health and strength, give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings upon the United States of America and all of the states, the state of Georgia. And Lord, we ask that you will continue to guide us as we deliberate, have discussions in this meeting. Let us emerge on one accord and let the work that we do be for the uplifting of the city and the uplifting of that kingdom. Lord, we thank you for those who give in public-private partnerships. We thank you for their giving hearts. We ask your blessings upon those who are less fortunate, those who are homeless, without food, clothes, and shelter. Lord, we thank you for all of these things that we've prayed for today in your Son Jesus' name. Let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, and next up, we've got the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Northside Baptist Church of Wanta. You guys want to come on up? If you would, stand with me, please.
Certified of the United States of America and the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, tell us your name and how old you are and that you can't wait to get back in school again, right? What's your name?
Andy Nolan.
And how old are you?
What?
How old are you?
Seven.
Seven, all right, good. You'll pass the microphone to the -- there we go.
My name's Ari and I'm five.
I am Jordan Rose and I am 11 years old.
My name's Grace Robesha and I'm 12.
My name is Corin Nolan and I am seven years old.
My name's Lucy Robesha and I am seven years old.
This is Libby Messner, she's 11.
And this is Barbara Beston, who's 12.
And Ms. Perkel.
And I'm Sandy Carl. So, Amara is a group at our church, a two-year-old.
We're just pleased to meet you.
Well, you guys did a great job and we hope you come back and lead us in pledge again. How about that? Thank y'all, enjoy your day. Give them a hand. All right, the minutes from the May 21st meeting are -- we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a fairly short agenda this morning, some zoning matters to take up. First one up is the rezoning at 6890 River Road with amended conditions. Mr. Myers is here for the applicant and it is ready for action.
All right, there's a motion, second, to approve the rezoning. Any discussion? All right, if you would, Bruce, please cue the counselors, you can cast your votes, enter your votes, please. All right, that is approved.
Okay, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Myers. All right, next item, there's been a lot of previous discussion on. Mayor, this is a text change for the Unified Development Ordinance to permit health and fitness facility in the historic district on a special exception application only, but it's ready for approval today.
Motion's second to approve. We do have discussion. Hold on just a second. Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I just want to make clarification on that. This is a special exception, only dealing with health and fitness centers. I think it's 15,000 square feet only and seven properties that are already located in the historic district. That's all it pertains to. Be no additional or no new, they would not fall under special exception. Only pertains to those seven properties already there. Is that right?
Uh huh. Yeah, built anything that size built prior to 2019.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor House?
I just want to make note what I'm not happy with how we got to this point. I don't have anything against the gym itself and where it is right now, because I don't think that causes a particular problem, that particular gym and that building, but I'm not happy with how we got to this point in time where we have this UDO. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, and I think frankly it would be appropriate, because I've received, and we all have received, a lot of information and a lot of assertions and I think that, you know, right now, the important thing, I think, is to deal with whether or not it's an appropriate action or not, and afterwards, I think there should be a process that we go through to see if this could have been handled better, because we want to make certain that the processes we follow are above reproach and they're transparent, so I would anticipate that coming forward. All right, we do have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All right, if you would, please cue the vote. Counselors, enter your votes, please. Okay, and that passes.
All right, that does pass on a 6 to 2 vote. Is that right?
That's what I've got.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item up is a resolution authorizing a special exception for a boarding house at 3019 North Lumpkin Road. This was delayed from a previous meeting. It is recommended for approval. Applicant is Charles Wright.
Counselor Huff?
Yes, I appreciate this being delayed for a month or so, so I could check up on it. I took time to talk to some other residents in that area and they are not in favor of this. It was first mentioned to us that he was taking care of some family members and things, and for family members, you don't need any type of special exception for that. It was mentioned after that point that he was in contact with New Horizon and speaking with them, and if he's in contact with New Horizon, then the people that come have money attached, so there's a money-making issue here. And the people that have taken time to form a community in that area are totally against it. There's police coming, fire trucks coming, ambulances coming on a regular basis. And my other point is, I don't know how I got to this point, because nobody contacted me. I found out when we walked in council meeting for the first reading, and what's really going on is it's split between Counselor Woodson and myself. The house is on my side of the street and most of the people affected are on the other side of the street, so I took time to talk to people on her side of the street and my side of the street, and I hadn't found anybody that's in favor of this except the owner of the property. So, I'm asking council to vote to deny this this morning. Thank you.
All right, let's see if anybody else is here that wants to be heard, Mayor, before we vote. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this petition? This is at 3019 North Lumpkin Road. Okay, I don't see any hands.
Okay, it's set in the form of a motion. Okay, there's a motion to deny this special exception and a second. Any discussion there is? Counselor House?
I'm just glad Counselor Huff talked to residents, because I was surprised that it received approval when I looked at the application, and there were four local people who had said that they didn't want it there, so thank you very much for taking the time to go talk to people, because I was concerned about it, you know, when I saw that we had approvals everywhere except for the local residents.
Counselor Huff, you have --
Yes.
Okay.
We are voting yes to deny.
A yes vote will mean that the special exception is denied.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we can cue that. Counselors, enter a yes vote means you deny the request, and it is denied.
That is denied. All right, that petition is denied, and that's all we have listed for official business, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll go to our public agenda. First is Mr. Christopher Wilks, representing the Art of Yoga LLC regarding a request for an extension. Mr. Wilks here? Wait, here he is. Mr. Wilks, come on up, sir. You'll have -- oh, it's Mr. Wilks, sir, okay. Okay, up to this podium, please, sir, and you'll have five minutes and you'll hear a tone when it tells you you're kind of running out, and if we can't get it resolved or you have something further to add, you can come back at the end of the meeting for another, an additional three minutes. But if you would, start off by stating your name and your address.
My name's Christopher Wilks and I run the business at Art of Yoga, 627 Second Avenue, Suite 6.
And your residence, sir?
7647 Lloyd Road, Columbus, Georgia, 31909.
Thank you, you may continue.
Okay, I guess this is in relation to the UDO that y'all have going on with everything that's going on in the historic district, but I purchased the business December the 1st from the previous owner, and I have all my paperwork for, you know, where I purchased the business. I got my lease signed and everything, and then after the fact it came to my attention that, I guess, everything with the historic district that was going on with the UDO. And I relatively recently, last week, just received a citation in regards to everything that was going on, and they wanted me to go to court, and I just didn't know if there's some type of paperwork or something I could receive to take with me to court in regards to that situation, because I was just waiting for everything, you know, to pass through, and the business has been running since, you know, it's been there like over 10 years.
Yeah, it's been, the business has been in operation for a number of years. You simply bought a running business
Yes, sir.
And continued to operate it in a manner that it had been operated previously.
And when I tried to go get my business license, after the previous owner closed out and everything, they said that, you know, this was going on and I wasn't able to get it, so I just needed to know, I needed some advice on how to proceed so that I'm not breaking any laws or anything, you know.
Counselor Woodson?
I'm sorry, sir, your name was?
Christopher.
Christopher. I just want to let you know that we just finished passing the UDO ad hoc.
Right.
Right, so you can now go and apply for your business, so I'm not sure what you're talking about, the citation or whatever.
Oh, they literally --
I'm told he's the one that was in Seal's building.
Well, this is a little different from what was just passed, and so the Inspections and Codes Director is here and can speak to it, but as the gentleman indicated, don't want to be redundant, someone operated the exact business that he purchased and wants to continue to operate at that location. That person had a certificate of occupancy and their business license for 10 years or so operated that area business. He made the purchase of the business. He went to get his certificate of occupancy so that he could get his business license and be legal, and he was told that it wasn't a permissible use, and he's trying to figure, what do you mean, it's not a permissible use? The previous owner has had this business for 10 years, and so obviously the CO was issued by us, the city, and I need the Inspections and Codes Director to come and speak to it, and inadvertently or in error, I don't know what happened, but the city did that, and so he obviously made the assumption that it's been here for 10 years, I purchased a business, and I'll just go and get my own license and be legal, as he said, he wants to be legal, and he has now been cited. And so, Mr. Mayor, I really need our Inspections and Codes Director to come to the mic and speak to the matter, and so this is completely different from what you just heard
Okay.
For Counselor Woodson's --
There are a couple of counselors in queue. Are you willing to wait until after? Okay, Mr. Hudson?
All right, we reviewed the business license at this location, and there was a CO pulled in 2013, business, and then it changed again in 2014, and from 2014 to 2018 before, I'm sorry, he purchased the facility, the way it was approved was as a business. Now, that was back in 2014, you know, my staff did approve it, but my thought then was they may not have known what per se yoga was in 2014 or 2013, and knowing really if qualified as a health and fitness facility, because there's nothing, it wouldn't have been approved as a direct use as, because that use is a health and fitness facility. So, when we were told as, when all this started coming up about the other property at 710, we started researching to say, hey, who else in the historic district is potentially having businesses that are not for approved use? I believe he came in either January or February of this year, when he came in. We told him at that time, because you were specifically, this is the use of this to be a health and fitness facility, we said, no, that is not allowed per the UDO. Now, code-wise, like I said, my guys were more in the code mindset, size of the building, the occupancy use, that kind of stuff, it met those requirements. The building, the actual unit, I think, is what, maybe 800 square feet? It's not very big, so ideally at that point, they use it, the way we classified it in the system was an accessory use to the main structure. I wouldn't do that today, but back in 2014, when it was done, that's how it was approved. When the new owner came in, that's why we stopped him, we said, hey, you just need to be aware of the potential special exception that is currently being talked about at council and at PAC, because that would potentially affect if you continue to operate at that location. So, the special exception would apply to him. He would be able to apply for that special exception, because the size of the building is 15,000 square feet or larger, so his unit that is in that whole building, he would qualify for that special exception. Yeah, he does, yeah, he's going to have to go through PAC, I mean, he's going to have to do the same thing 710 did, so he would have the opportunity to do the same thing.
So, did we cite him?
Well, we cited him for not operating his business, because he came in in February and we told him what he shouldn't be doing, and then when we went out there last week, they were still operating as a business, because the business license had expired in 2018.
So, his request today is for an extension until he can get this --
Correct. And now that the special exception has been approved, he will qualify for that and we can get rid of the citation. The intent is, we just didn't know what the process was at that point, because we didn't know whether it was going to be approved or not, so I wasn't just going to continue.
Yeah, and this sounds like kind of a unique situation. He kind of got caught in the middle, because he'd been operating, or he had not, but there had been the exact same business operating in the exact same location since 2013, and he just bought an active business and then tried to do the right thing, getting a license, paying taxes, and that's when they found out we weren't supposed to. All right, Counselor Davis?
I think this gentleman is what I talked about earlier, you're one of the seven buildings that qualifies for a special exemption, like you just had to go through the process now, so you're able to keep your business going. If it would have failed earlier, you would have been out of business.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. City Attorney, did you have some comment?
Yes, Mayor, for the record, I would recommend that you make a motion to stay any enforcement of this man's business operation until he can be heard on, through the special exception process.
Second.
All right, it's a motion, second, to allow him to continue to operate until he can get his special exception taken care of. Is there a time limit we want to put on that, or?
He'll have to apply to PAC and, like I said, same.
So, it could take a couple of months.
Couple of months, usually, right?
90 days, and then we can revisit it if we haven't gotten through there, that should handle it. All right, there's a motion, second, then, to, yes, ma'am?
The motion, too, was to stay any enforcement of the citation, so if there is any, I don't know if there's a financial piece attached to that or what, but whatever it is, that's the motion, is that we don't do anything with this guy until he can come back and do the special exception request, so.
Okay, good, and there was a second to the --
And then we said the 90 days, was that ever amended? Because then we said we would give him --
I didn't, I didn't put a timeline on it, mainly because, you know, I don't want him to have to keep coming down here if it's, you know, more than 90 days.
Okay.
But that's
No, that's fine.
That's not part of the motion, as far as I'm concerned.
All right, Counselor Pew, or Mayor Pro Tem Pew, excuse me.
Mr. Wilks, do you understand what you have to do now?
Not exactly. How do I start the application or the PAC process?
Okay, that's what I was going to suggest, that somebody gets with him.
Mr. Hutchinson will lead him through that process.
Yes.
An able guide, I probably might add.
That's what I was just asking, I said John would do it.
Okay, all right, any further discussion on the motion and a second to afford Mr. Wilks a stay of enforcement? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Wilks?
Thank you.
Need to get on that process.
I'll go with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore regarding some concerns regarding acts of public safety in Parks and Recreation Department. Hello, Ms. Holston-Palmore.
Good morning. I am Audrey Holston-Palmore and I reside at 1035 Lawyer's Lane. I am appearing here today on the public agenda for the purpose of moving forward with concerns I've stood here previously about current concerns I have with divisions of city government, namely Public Safety Department and the Parks and Recreation Department. But before I proceed with the continuous concerns, I'd like to state to Mayor Henderson to restate the voted proposal of the council about the frequency of a citizen, how frequently a citizen can appear on the public agenda, and the conditions a citizen can appear.
Was there a question, ma'am? I thought you wanted to address --
No, I wanted to make a statement to you about your willingness to restate the proposal that you made in January, I believe, or it was February, about making changes to the public agenda format, and because I went to the clerk of council wanting to appear on the public agenda, and I was told by one of the personnel in the clerk of council's office that there had been changes, and I asked to receive those changes in written communication, and I was not able to receive them, so I pondered over what was told to me, and now I'm asking if you would simply just restate what it is that the council voted.
We'll get you a copy, a written copy. You should be able to get it, in fact, it's on the registration form that you sign when you appear before council, but basically it's that you cannot appear before council on the same topic within 60 days, and that's to keep us from getting too redundant, and it allows council to focus in on exactly what your request is and then address it at that time.
Okay, is there a certain topic that cannot be discussed by a citizen? So, in other words, let me get it straight. You're saying that whatever a citizen appears before council, they have to wait 60 days before they come back and present that same concern?
That's right, and you've got five minutes to speak, and then if you don't, if you're unable to communicate the message you wanted to communicate, you can stick around until the end of the meeting, then you'll have an additional three minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm continuing with my concerns that have been going on since December 2017 in public safety, in the direction of public safety, and I have spoken with you as the new Public Safety Director, and some of the actions that you have said that you would consider doing, such as calling me between 9:00 and 10:00 on any day at the phone number that I've given you. I haven't received a call from you. I initiated a call on April the 4th, and you did call me then, but you have not responded. This is from February the 12th up until April the 4th. You did state that you were going to call me on April, I mean, on March the 12th, and I haven't heard from you at all via the telephone number that I had given to you, and I'm very concerned about that type of public announcement that you would call, but you haven't called. And I know you're a busy person, just like I'm very busy, but I have set aside that particular time for us to communicate, because communication is very important in order to resolve my concern, and I'd like to know, is there going to be? And I'd like to know, is there going to be another extension needed since you haven't called? And today is May the 27th.
Well, I did call you back and we did talk a little bit about it.
On April the 4th, when I initiated the call to you?
We did not agree as to what the next step was. So I, you know, I, I feel like I owe you an answer. I, I, I can't promise that you'll like the answer you're getting. I think I told you that, um, when we, when we first, first met.
Right. And I gave you information regarding my concern.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was stated by you in front of your assistant, Richard Bishop, that you would do the investigation. And I haven't heard anything about when are we going to come together, uh, in, you know, in the same room as I've requested with the composer.
I tell you what, you are out of time for right now, but if you want to call my office and schedule a time to come see me, you, you're welcome to do that.
If I wanna call your office?
You're out of time, Ms. Palmore, I'm sorry. The five minutes are up. But if you wanna wait around to the end of the meeting, you can have three more minutes if you wanna come up and speak to council.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. And I think that's the end of our public agenda, so we'll move on to the city managers. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've got just, uh, some purchases and then I've got a few updates this morning. And, uh, first on the list of purchases, I've got on-call general contractor services.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve A through F. Uh, Counsel, Counselor Davis?
And Mr. City Manager, I wanna be careful how I, how I state this. I know it's going through a process, but, uh, just in case, will there be occasional, um, amendments or maybe a, um, I guess another opportunity for certain general contractors or general local? I'm referring to local general contractors. I know we got limited on here, but, um, I'm not so sure that everybody received their notice, you know? And I don't know who's, um, who's, uh, I, I guess responsible. I know whose responsibility is, I just don't know if everybody got the chance to have a notice. But it's gone through the process and I'm fine with that. But I did wanna ask that question in the future, if it would be amended or if it's just a one-year contract or how that's working. Because there may be even some specialty-type work that, that may cross over and, uh, there may be a contractor that can't do that or the others may not, you'd have to pursue somebody different. So how, uh, just, I guess what I'm asking, how is all that work in, in context of what I just did? Yes, sir. The initial term, uh, is, is two years. But at any time, uh, we may decide to add to a list, whether it be architects, engineers. I think last week we came and added an additional source for maybe uniforms or something. You saw that we added an additional vendor to the already, the, the list that we already have of, I bet it was uniforms. But, but yeah, we can come back and add to this list and, uh, we may decide to take some off the list. But the initial term is two years. And I look at the, this is more, I mean, it's what it says, it's on-call, but that would apply like architects and lawyers, et cetera, that, those groups where you. That's right. Have a pool that you go through. That's exactly right. We have a pool of architects, engineers, lawyers, um, so that if something breaks, like in the jail, maybe showers, we don't have to go through a lengthy, uh, we would have to do an emergency purchase. Right. To go identify one vendor to come and do that work. Well, in this case, we've got a list of five vendors. We could say, okay, we've got a problem at the jail, we need you there today. And so that is what it allows us to expedite rather than just, rather than just go out and identify contractor that we don't know whoever can come and do the work and get it done because it has to be done on an emergency basis. It's not really a totally exclusive deal. That's correct. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, are there any other items, any other of the purchases that somebody'd like to pull out or get some more information on? Because there, I think we had a motion and a second to approve items A through F. All right, if you'd cue that vote and register your votes. Purchases passed. Mr. City Manager, would you run down them purchases quickly just to let the citizens know what we're voting on?
Yes, sir. Item B would be utility tractors. C, uh, any ducter truck that's used by stormwater management, um, maintenance to clean stormwater sewers. We've got, uh, GPS, uh, offender monitor, monitoring services for the sheriff's office. We've got position analysis services done by Columbus State University. And then computers for sheriff's office, uh, pursuit vehicles. Those are the purchases.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. And with that, uh, I've got, uh, a few updates, uh, Mr. Mayor. And, um, the first update, uh, I've got, um, Asante Hiltz from the Health Department. She's the district program manager for West Central Health District. And of course, you know that, um, our commissioner of health at the Department of Public Health here in Muskogee County is Beverly Townsend. And, uh, I serve, um, as a, on the Health Department Board as well as the mayor on the Health Department Board. And I was sharing with the mayor, we've got a number of what I will refer to as outside agencies that we continue to fund, um, by law. And, uh, Health Department is one of those agencies. And you may know that, uh, we fund the Health Department $823,839. We pay their rent and we pay for services for residents here in Muskogee County. And, um, I thought it'd be good that you see them every once in a while, considering, uh, we spend over $800,000 supporting the Department of Public Health, the Health Department as we refer to it. And, um, so we've got Asante Hiltz, uh, Hiltz here today. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I think it'd be good from time to time, and I hope council will agree, uh, agencies that you're funding with taxpayers' dollars ought to appear here every once in a while. And for example, the Regional, uh, Valley Commission, we fund them by law, $200,000. But you don't ever see them, they don't ever appear before you here at this council to let you know what they're doing with your $200,000 or the taxpayer's $200,000. And so we're gonna try and get those, what I refer to as outside agencies on the schedule so, every so often that they will come and can share with you that you know that, uh, they're, you're funding them in your annual budgets and, and some of the things that they're doing to take care of the citizens of Muskogee County. So with that, uh, she's gonna be briefed this morning, um, Asante Hiltz.
And before we start, the Mayor Protem had a comment.
I agree with him, Mr. City Manager. And we need to write them a letter indicating at least, at least twice a year.
At least twice a year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I've invited them to come, uh, quarterly if they'd like so, but no less than twice a year, Mayor Protem. And I've also invited the Health Department. They're gonna, she's gonna share some information with you this morning. I want them to take advantage of CCGTV. Because we're spending this money and they are providing services to people in Muskogee County, our residents. And they ought to take advantage of CCGTV and share their programs, their services and what they're doing for residents of Muskogee County. So at least twice a year, we'll certainly do that.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. So, welcome.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Mr. Hughley. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. And we would like to take this opportunity to ensure that we are using your taxpayer dollars effectively, informing, um, and protecting the citizens of Columbus. So what I've distributed to everyone is a Your Health at a Glance from Muskogee County that we have developed. And I represent the West Central Health District and our Columbus Health Department. And we've developed one of these at-a-glance infographic sheets for each one of the counties that we service. And there are 16 of them, Muskogee being one of them. And this is done every three years. And we try to develop something that will be easy to understand, comprehend and convey the message about how we're doing as a county. For our county health rankings, we rank about 101 out of 159 Georgia counties with a total population of approximately 194,000. The health factors that are affecting us, you can see in the middle orange section, 49% of our children are in single-parent households. About 13% of our population is uninsured. 11% of households have no vehicles available to them. About 21% of our population is living in poverty and about 6% unemployment rate here. I won't go over every single indicator, but I'll just highlight a few. 30% of our adults report being obese. About 26% report no leisure time physical activity. 88% do have access to exercise opportunities. About 12% report limited access to healthy food. And 21% report food insecurity. 20% of our adults are smokers. You will see in the green section that the leading causes of ER visits are unintentional injuries, bone and muscle diseases, pregnancy and childbirth complications. And our leading causes of hospitalizations are pregnancy and childbirth complications, mental and behavioral disorders and bone and muscle diseases. Our premature death is caused primarily by heart disease, cancer and unintentional injuries. And our leading causes of death are heart disease, cancer and chronic lower respiratory diseases. One of the main areas of concern is our STD rates are 1.6 times higher in Muskogee County compared to the state of Georgia. This at-a-glance in summary is an opportunity for us to start a conversation with our community members to identify what our priorities should be going forward over the next year. So today we're having a community conversation at 11:00 AM at the public library to ask our citizens, what do you think about how our health is, where we are as a county? And what do you recommend we focus on going forward as a health department? Those who aren't able to make it today to the public library, we have placed a section on our westcentralhealthdistrict.com website where the public can leave comments so that we can take that into consideration when we're developing our plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Mayor, a few weeks ago, we had the Atlanta Regional Commission to come down and do an update. And, and this is kind of a follow-up to that, but you're hearing it from our local, um, health officials. And, uh, I thought it'd be good for them to just come and make an appearance and announce what they're doing today at 11 o'clock and to let you know that they will be coming in the future to continue to update you, Mr. Mayor and council on the health of those, uh, in our county, Muskogee County, and how they're using the dollars you fund them.
They do a terrific job with the money they're provided and, uh, for a very, very broad constituency. And, uh, and it is good that you guys have an opportunity to come up and share with the public some of the things that you are doing and some of the data that you're collecting. Counselor Huff?
Uh, Ms. Hill, thank you for coming. Uh, tell me about your certifications and what they stand for. The end of your, your name there, the DRPH and all that?
Yes, sir. I have a doctorate in public health and a master's in public health. I'm professionally trained as an epidemiologist. So I focus on how we can make our community better. My degree is in social behavior and community health.
Okay, very good, very good.
Thank you.
How often do you have these meetings that you're having, like you're having this morning at 11?
So this will be our eighth meeting and we have one for every county. So we'll have a total, by the end of June, we'll have a total of 16 meetings conducted.
Okay, okay.
The hope, the hope is that we'll have these, uh, these meetings once a year.
Okay, and if you would for me and the rest of council, let the city manager know to get in contact with us ahead of time and let us know next time so we can try and be there to support you and get the information directly.
Absolutely. And we'll take you up on that offer to be here every quarter. And we'll have updates so that you can have advance notice of when we have those meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you did. We've got Counselor Woodson too, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask her to let us know when she had the next meeting so we could put it on our access channel and our website. Because last minute, you know, you're not gonna have a big crowd. Not everyone, you know, pays attention to every set of media. So it's good to use social media and everything you have available. And our access channel is available to you for free. So I just wanted to also tap on that to make sure you let us know ahead of time.
Yes, ma'am, will do.
And thank you.
And so, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm glad that Counselor Huff asked her, um, what all those titles mean because I, I didn't get it, but now I know that she's Dr. Hiltz. And I would've referred to her as such had I understood all of those titles at the end of her name. But very impressive and, uh, thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, with that, we are going to call on Angelica Alexander, uh, finance director for the monthly finance update.
Good morning. Good morning. So there are, uh, two documents being passed out currently, one being the monthly financial snapshot as of May 2019. And the other I'll, I'll speak on shortly after I am done with the update. And so just starting to the right of the snapshot in the general fund, the general fund is up 3.62%. The other local option sales tax fund is up 6.09%. Stormwater sewer fund is up 1.52%. Paving fund is up 2.18%. The medical center fund is up 1.97%. The integrated waste fund is up 7.52%. The emergency telephone fund is up 16.95%. And, um, the biggest differential for the emergency telephone fund is the fact that the state has started collections of our E911 fees as of January 2019. Um, with those, uh, with that collection change, they've also changed the method of distribution for our prepaid wireless fees. Um, we used to get that once a year, now they're sending that to us every month. Um, the economic development fund is up 1.97%. Um, the debt service fund is down 3.88%. And that is mainly attributed to the change in the millage for FY18. The millage rate was point zero, uh, point zero six, zero mills. And it's point four seven mills for FY19. Uh, the transportation fund is down 3.58%. Part of that, I, I do know I've been, I'm speaking with Metro as far as, uh, the revenues, um, the grant funding in particular. And the, the, the shutdown created some delay in them receiving their reimbursements, but they're currently, um, working through that. The trade center fund is up 7.91%. Bull Creek Golf Course is down 1.1.20%. Oxbow Creek Golf Course is up 8.25%. And the civic center fund is up 4.23%. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax fund, the public safety summary. Uh, year-to-date revenues for, um, O'Law's Public Safety is 18.8 million, almost 18.9 million in sales tax collections with interest, uh, adding another 400,000, rounding that out to about 19.3 million in total revenues. Expenditures, uh, year-to-date is 18.2 million. Moving further down to the, uh, infrastructure summary, the revenues, uh, year-to-date is 8.2 million. Expenditures are, um, about 10.4 million. Moving to the left side of the snapshot here, as far as the general fund expenditures, the goal is to be at or above 16.67%. So the, uh, departments that have exceeded that goal are highlighted in yellow. That starts out with the, uh, city attorney's litigation, which, um, of course, we're defending several million in claims. The employee benefits, um, is just barely not meeting that threshold at 16%. And that again was due to the, our annual death and major disability payments. That's a one-time expenditure, so we should be, we will be okay for the remainder of the fiscal year. Real estate, that is due to the building maintenance and repairs for, uh, legacy terrorists. That, of course, is, uh, offset by revenues. Elections, um, that is due to the runoff election expenditures. Elections, that is due to the runoff election expenses that have been incurred. The jury managers, primarily due to petty jury fees. The elections and the jury manager did come to council to request additional appropriations. And then there is the public defender, and that is largely due to the monthly contract that we pay in advance to the state for the public defender. And then also due to the conflict attorney fees that we pay for recorder's court. That is a separate item on the city manager's agenda, but I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that particular item.
And you can do it right now.
Okay.
All right, we've got a question, Counselor Davis.
No, I'll yield until she finishes it so someone will know the matter.
Okay, so the conflict attorney fees and recorder's court, the public defender's office, of course, is providing public defender services for recorder's court. It is their sole discretion to, if they determine that there is a conflict that exists in any particular case in recorder's court, if they determine that there is a conflict, then there is a list of attorneys that recorder's court has to call in order to provide public defender services for an individual in recorder's court. And pursuant to ordinance 13-39, we will need additional appropriations related to these fees. We included about 13,000 in the budget for FY '19, but it appears as if the trend will be about 40,000. So we will need an additional 27,000 in appropriations for the conflict attorney fees that we're paying in recorder's court. And all of those fees are paid, are paid through the finance department, and so that is why I am requesting the additional funding for the conflict attorney fees. And for the FY '20 budget, we have included additional appropriations. So hopefully, this won't be an issue for FY '20, but for FY '19, we do need about an additional $27,000 to cover the fees for the remainder of the year. What has been paid and for the remainder of the year.
And so when you're done with this update, we can follow up, we can come back to that $27,000 to determine what they want to do.
Right, yes.
Do we need a motion now? Or do we need to wait?
Well, now or late, after she's done?
You can do it now.
You can do it now? I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Motion at a second to approve the additional funding. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Okay. So you want to finish your, I think Counselor Davis has a question, but you need to finish your report. It's okay, she can finish. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. City Manager.
I was done with the snapshot. Just moving on to the second handout, if you want to ask your question, okay? Well, so the second handout that I provided to you is based on the referral from council regarding best practices for salary savings and effective budgeting in regards to salaries and wages. We do practice, you know, best practices as far as what we budget for salaries and wages in that we include in the budget estimated salary savings that we expect to receive from certain departments. So that is a best practice that is recommended by GFOA. We do include that in our budget. And so this language here would be in addition to that, those practices that we already have in place from a budgeting standpoint. And this salary savings language, again, what we would like to add to the FY '20 budget ordinance, I'll just read it, is that salary savings is the amount of salary expense saved when a position is vacant or filled at a lower salary level than the budgeted level. All salary savings achieved in FY 2020 by any department or elected office of the Columbus, Georgia Consolidated Government, or any board, commission, and/or authority created by the Columbus Council shall only be used to replenish fund balance reserves. Use of salary savings is hereby restricted for any other purpose unless expressly approved by council. So that is a section of the budget ordinance that we would add based on council's referral.
Do we need a motion to add that to it?
No, it's actually gonna be in the budget.
That was actually in response to, I think, a question that Counselor Davis had asked. And so we'll add that to the order. All right, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Alexander, Director Alexander, I wanted you, if you would, take a moment, maybe the mayor as well, city manager, if you guys want to get in on the discussion. But, you know, every year, we go through this. And it's okay because it is very confusing when we post the notices in the paper and the ledger inquire. I mean, we're required by law to post the budget, the revenues, expenditures. I mean, there's a number of things that's supposed to be, you know, posted in the paper. And we go through three hearings, if I'm not mistaken. But every year, it always reads as a tax increase, but that's very confusing. That's not the case. We have not, this council and the city has not raised property taxes at all. It stays the same. It's stayed like that for years. We have not increased property taxes. But the way it reads, it reads as an increase. So would you be so kind to take the time to explain that to the citizens watching so we can, and maybe for some of the new council members, because it's, you know, sometimes your phone starts ringing off the hook. What have y'all just done, you know? What did y'all done with the budget? So.
Well, and I will, let me just say this, and then the finance director or the city attorney may weigh in, but the language that is used in that advertisement is the language provided to us through the state legislature. The law requires it reads in the way it reads. And so if we did everything exactly the same during the course of the year, but we added 600 new homes, and in other words, constructed homes, 600 new homes and two new 50,000-square feet buildings, all else was the same. Those 600 new homes and those new buildings that we constructed would increase the digest, obviously, because you've added to your inventory. The adding to the inventory would mean that there's a, it gives the appearance that our property taxes, we had an increase in property taxes. And so the law, the legislature requires that, the news article, they tell us exactly what to publish. And so we can't deviate from the law and what they've said we've got to publish. And so there were no increase in property taxes or anything on any citizen. It's just that we added 600 new homes to the inventory. And so it reads as such. And so just trying to keep it simple, that's what it is. And so the city attorney or the finance director may have something to add to that, but.
Well, it also, it was part of the taxpayer bill of rights that was passed just so that the public would know what the value of a mill. We charge mills. We levy millage rate. And it's almost like sales tax, because if you buy an item this year and you pay a certain percentage of sales tax, it equals a certain amount of money. But if the price of the item goes up next year, you still pay the same percentage of sales tax, but the amount received is a little higher.
Right.
So this is a way of being transparent. It's a way of letting all the citizens know what the value of that millage rate is and how it's been impacted. And it can also be impacted when we see a slight increase in the digest and somebody's building that they own goes up in value a little bit. There will be a slight bump in the amount of taxes received on that building, not because we increased taxes, but because the value of the property has made that mill worth a little bit more.
Mm-hmm. I like both of your explanations. And that is basically, as the city manager and the mayor stated, we are required by state law to publish a notice of property tax increase when the amount of properties that have been assessed and the taxes that we expect to receive based on those reassessments will give us more revenue in the current year than it did in the prior year. And based on that calculation, the tax commissioner's office actually calculates what that rollback millage rate would be for this year. In Urban Service District 1, it would be 17.09 mills in order to produce, that's what the millage would have to be in order to produce the same amount of revenue that we receive this year. And of course, we're not making any changes to the millage, as Counselor Davis mentioned. It is still at 17.18 mills. And just because of it remaining the same and those reassessments that have occurred, we will expect to receive about a 1% increase in our tax revenue. So.
Thank you, councilman. Counselor Thomas?
Not on this issue.
Okay. I think we're through with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wait, Mr. City Attorney?
I think all of y'all said that very well. It's in the Georgia law, Title 32, every year, we have to publish this advertisement when the total value of our digest is projected to increase. And the county association has asked the legislature to change this language, but so far, they have declined. And we have to print it as set out in the statute, notice of property tax increase. But those folks with a homestead exemption should not be affected on the amount of taxes they pay, as we've said previous years. Their taxes should remain the same. You own commercial property and the assessment's gone up, there might be a slight increase, but that's it.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, well, I think Counselor.
I want to go back to the salary savings language. Excuse me. I'm not sure why salary savings in this language has become so prevalent, because this is the same thing that happens in all of our budget categories. If you don't spend all of the money in your office supply account, that stays in the fund balance.
Sure.
And I think that part of this is that the salary savings has been much larger in some departments than other savings. But correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Alexander, but we don't give to each, for example, we don't give to the finance department a special account that says, this is your money to use for salary savings, and then at the end of the year, if there's anything left in that account, it comes back to the city. That money stays in the general fund account all year, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so while this is an explanation mainly to the department heads who want to spend salary savings for other kinds of things, it's no different than any other part of that budget, that all of the savings in all of the budget categories stay in the general fund and are part of the fund balance.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Okay. We just have been making a big to-do about the salary savings, and it's not just salary savings, it's everything.
That's right.
That's correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, next, I've got Parks and Recations Director Holly Browder. She's going to come forward on urgent capital needs. You may recall during the budget discussion, they were asking for some critical need, capital needs. And we said to you that they had, they have obviously a large amount of salary savings this year, and we could, and they need these things, they're urgent, and we could bring them back to you. I told you on the 28th, at the 28th meeting, and I told you not to exceed 250,000 during that budget deliberation. And so the director is here to bring you those critical capital needs that she talked about at the budget hearing, that in lieu of placing it in the fiscal year 20 budget, we would go ahead and get them now because they're urgent. And she's here today to ask for, to present to you those urgent capital needs that she wants to proceed forward with and answer questions. And if there are no, once we've answered all of your questions, at the next budget meeting, we're going to list these urgent capital needs not to exceed 250,000. So this is what we told you we were going to do in the timeline that we told you we were going to do it. And so with that, we've got Holly Browder, our director.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Just as City Manager said, I'm here this morning with our list, as was discussed during our budget presentation, items that are needed for the department in the way of equipment, as well as the one inmate vehicle that we did discuss during our budget presentation. Simply put, that's all that's on the list. We were under 250,000 as requested, and these are the items that we would like to request at this time be added for this budget year, as Mr. City Manager said. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, but it's pretty cut and dry. These are just the equipment pieces we would request at this time.
Counselor House?
What's a Versavac sweeper and a Spraystar 2000?
So a Versavac sweeper is used on the fields to help keep the dead grass off the fields. It helps the fields to stay healthier. And what was the other?
Spraystar 2000?
Oh, it's a sprayer used to eliminate weeds and things that you don't want on your grass to help us maintain the fields in a better way. One of the big things that we've mentioned is with the monies that are being put into South Commons. A lot of this is equipment that we previously owned but haven't replaced through the years. And so we're trying to get equipment that we can maintain those fields in the way we would like to maintain them.
So would you explain each piece of equipment you've already taken care of?
Absolutely. Certainly. So the first one, obviously, is an inmate detail vehicle. It's just another vehicle for us to be able to transport our inmate details. Our inmate details are those individuals that cut all of your parks, for the most part, here in Columbus. They're done by inmates. We don't have enough employees, so that's what that vehicle is. A real master is a real mower. It's the mowers like if you see on a golf course or the nicer ballparks. These are the type mowers that they typically would cut. They do a better job. They cut the grass in a better way, keeps it from killing the ends of your grass, the top of your grass, if you would. And the next one is a turf aerator. So obviously, if you've ever had your personal yards aerated, it's a machine, to give too much detail, but it has little fingers, and it aerates your grass. It gives your air, your grass oxygen, allows nutrients to get down into your grass. A dethatcher also breaks up your grassroots and helps your grass to grow in a better way. And then we talked about the sweeper and the sprayer.
Do we need an approval today?
Well, you certainly could do it today. We were just gonna bring it back on next week's purchase agenda.
Move your foot, we're gonna prove it anyway.
Second, motion second to approve these emergency purchases. Any discussion on any of them? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That was easy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Browder, thank you, because I, you know, when we see these brought before us, it's a reminder of just what an amazing job your employees do with very limited resources.
Thank you.
And we thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, Mayor and council.
Oh, just a moment, Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Browder, I do want to ask you a question on another item, if I may.
Absolutely.
There's been a good bit of conversation lately about the handicapped trail at Cooper Creek and the fact that it's closed and has been closed for some time and because of some of the damage to the trail and so forth. Can you speak to that? Is that in the works to be cleared up and to be reopened, or is that gonna remain closed? Or would you?
Absolutely, certainly be happy to answer that for you. So a couple of years ago, we began to look at that trail because of the broken pathway, if you will. The roots there from the trees have damaged the pathway, which is, makes it hard for someone with a disability in a wheelchair, elderly person that might have trouble walking to use that space. The other side of it, if you will, is by a creek, the Cooper Creek, that runs through the actual park. And we are no longer allowed to get in that creek due to the environmental department. We got with engineering to try to see what we could do to shore up the bank, because when it floods, if you've ever seen Cooper Creek, when it floods, that area floods, just like the other side of the park does. And we are not able to get in the creek to do any work. The other part to it is, we're concerned if we will do damage to the trees in that area. So what we did was trying to be proactive. We got with engineering department, they had a little bit of paving funds that we could, for the park funds that we could use in that area. And we put in a new asphalt trail, if you will. It was put in last year when we closed, permanently closed the other trail, and there is signage. So if anyone gets into that handicap, the older trail, they've had to go by signage, and on one end, there's barricades. So they had to crawl over or go around the barricades that says- So they had to crawl over or go around the barricades that says this trail is closed, simply because we want people to be safe. We want our trails to be well-maintained and kept up. And due to the things that I've mentioned, we're unable to keep that trail up at this time. Perhaps in the future, we could go back, but we've been very tentative about doing any work, because we don't want to damage the trees. And then, like I said, on the, on the one side, which would be, depending on which way you're going, on your west side, we're unable to get down in the creek bed and do any work there as well. But there is an alternative. There is the asphalt paved trail that people can use. It comes right off the parking lot, so it's very easy and accessible for those in a wheelchair or those who might have difficulty walking. It's a very level surface, and we were grateful, like I said, last year with engineering, to be able to put that in for us, to provide people an alternative and a safe space.
So there are no plans to reopen that particular section, but the other section is open for handicap?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. And perhaps in the future, if there is a possibility, we can have a study or environmentally done to determine that. If funds are available, then absolutely, we would certainly consider it. It's not a matter that we won't consider it, it's just funding is not available at this time to make the necessary changes or to look at what needs to be done.
Thank you so much.
Oh, absolutely.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I'm not sure if this is Parks and Rec or the administration, but the carpet is going into the citizen services hallway.
Mm-hmm.
It goes to the community room. It's horrible.
Okay.
I can, I have a solution. I already have a solution, if it's okay.
Um.
Okay.
I, I was just going to refer to the Deputy City Manager Goodwin, and, but Ms. Browder says she has a solution. You have some money?
I'll let her share.
This is an emergency thing.
Good morning. Yes, it does. As a matter of fact, we've been looking at not only that, but the community room as well. We get a lot of use in this building. We're looking at that hallway, removing that carpet up front, and it will be similar to what you have in the foyer of this building. And so that's what we're looking to place out there. And so facilities is already on that.
Okay. And it needs to go on the emergency side, too.
I'm sorry?
Needs to go on the emergency side.
That's right. You're right.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Ms. Mayor, we've got Inspections and Codes Director John Hudgerson to talk about property maintenance and to provide a special enforcement update.
Morning, Council. Last few weeks, we've had a few calls, we've had some people come up for public agenda about some eyesores we've been dealing with in the community, so I just want to take this opportunity to kind of go over that and some other things we're working on. All right. One of the first ones we've been dealing with is 1830 Slay Drive. We've been getting calls from, you know, midtown, other groups, concerned citizens, people up and down that street worried about the concern of that property. I'd like to thank Public Works for coming out to help us get as much as that material we could get removed. As you can see, this was kind of what it looked like, and that's what it looks like. As of last week, she has gotten back to putting material back out there, so we'll just have to keep that monitored. But now, the backyard that was full of couches and everything else was removed, so I do appreciate Pat and Public Works for helping us get in that, get in that situation taken care of. One of the other ones, I've been working with our counselor, David's on, is that Nightwind Court. Unfortunately, we had the burned-out structure there, and they had come to council to initially to get a, get us to move forward with the demolition, but we were able to kind of get through to the owner, explain them the concern of this property and that we needed to also have this removed. So the owner paid for this demolition themselves, unfortunately with the burning of the house. So this was as of last Thursday. It is now completely clear. Debris is gone. There is still some material there, which, because Mr. Caminiti still resides on the site, but that's another issue we're dealing with, but at least the house itself has been removed off the property.
And all of that is in the front, it's gone?
No, now the shrubbery there is still, because it's an owner-approved demolition. The owner can choose what they want to stay there. Well, the, so the bushes are kind of, those bushes that you see in the front are still there. Like I said, if we were to perform the demolition, you'd be able to see all the way straight back. But with the owner demolition, they can choose what they want, because we wouldn't even have kept the driveway. The driveway would have went away as well. But if the owner chooses to, because I've got newer pictures because of the weekend, I didn't get a chance to update them, but they did take care of it this morning. And like I said, he still frequents the site, and there may be other issues we're dealing with. There's a culvert in the back as well, and we're dealing with that with engineering, based off of making sure he's not doing any legal dumping in the back and all that kind of stuff. So I know we've had a lot of citizens come in about these two, so I just want to let people know where we stood on both of those. Kind of under property maintenance, we've, we've talked about the amount of demolitions and amount of structures we have there that need to be removed. Kind of through our city demolition abatement process, like I said, if the 156 that I continue to mention are already, the bottom left there, the public notice to make interested parties aware of demolitions. That's where we are with those 156 properties. So it's not, we're having to start up here at the complaint section. We're down here on the bottom row here. So all we have to do is make that notice for two weeks. Once that, the money is approved, we're already ready to go. So that's kind of, so you kind of see that whole process, and that can take months to years to get to, but we're ideally here on that bottom row. The public notice is made, first hearing, second hearing, and then the property's demolished. Just, I like to always harp on this, that the city never takes ownership of the property, a lot of time from the owners. We always hear that, you know, well, it's your property now. No, the city's just debating the nuisance. We're either taking the grass, we're cutting the grass, we're taking the solid waste, we're moving that, but we're never taking ownership of the property. Even under a demolition, we're just debating the building itself. Under special enforcement, I just kind of wanted to go through a lot of these, because this is all of, not all-inclusive, but over the 60 different rules and ordinances that we do enforce under special enforcement. I wanted to go into detail on a few as we deal with them, especially this time of year is with our weeds. The line is 18 inches. So if we get a call, we will go out there with a tape measure and go out there and check. If it's at 12, it's not 18. So a lot of times, we would call, and people say that the grass is high, and we understand, but the ordinance is set at 18. So once it gets to the 18 inches, then we, we do put it out for bid. We just had a count, we just had another, two more vendors added last week. You guys approved in the last council session, which gives us more people to get out there and get on top of a lot of this, especially now with it being in the summer months. One addition that we've done is that you don't have to have any additional warnings for three years. So if we get out there and the high gets grass, the grass gets high again above the 18 inches, we don't even send a citation to warning, we're just back out there to cut it. Once we cut it, we do start putting, we have started to put down a herbicide, so properties that I know are repeat offenders, I don't have to go as many times. I can maybe only go like two or three times now instead of six, seven, eight times. So we made sure all of our vendors are certified to treats, pesticides, and things like that, so they treat and stamp the property, so we know it's been done. Scrap tires. I went to a conference actually in Savannah a few weeks ago and found out that it went down from 100 tires now to 25. So that will be coming soon to council to get amended, to reduce that number. EPD has reduced that junkyard from 100 down to 25. So that will help us in some places where people are just putting tires in their yards or trying to be backyard mechanics and things like that. We may be able to crack down on those because they didn't meet the 100 tire threshold, but if they meet 25, now we may be able to enforce things we weren't able to in the past. Solid waste, like I said, that is a very big definition, but ideally, it's anything that can, cannot be used or reused again. The concern we've had before in the past is that certain solid waste didn't fall into a certain threshold. So we were kind of stuck where, what could we do? Because ideally, we use it as it's beyond its useful life. So say if somebody had 30 buckets, all of those buckets still worked, they still were operating as buckets, so we didn't really have a way to say, okay, well, that's not a violation of solid waste, because the buckets work. Now, if they were broken buckets, we say, hey, no, you have to throw those away. So that's kind of where the stockpiling ordinance came from. So that, that was kind of a merge of our outdoor furniture ordinance that we were looking at and things like that, and we were able to kind of merge all those things together. So ideally, this property, as you can see, there was like eight bikes, there was like 15 grills. We were like, what are you doing with all this material? And we were able to use a stockpiling ordinance on Slay Drive and also on Nightwind because of the accumulation of the material. Let me not leave out Abbey Drive, because I know Counselor Allen's not here, but we are still working with Abbey Drive. We have another meeting potentially coming up with them in the next few weeks to kind of continue working with that one. So I didn't want to make sure I didn't leave out Abbey Drive. So with that ordinance, we were, all three of those properties were directly affected by the stockpiling ordinance, because we were able to kind of focus our enforcement. Junk vehicles, right now, that's really our stickiest thing right now, like we've mentioned to the delegation about the moratorium that's been put, and that keeps us from removing these vehicles off the property. We had two vehicles that would have qualified for junk vehicles at Slay Drive, and we could not remove them. They had to stay. So they didn't have tags, they weren't working in order, they would have met. This is typically our checklist that's in the ordinance, so if it violates two or more of these things, then we proceed with declaring it a junk vehicle. Right now, we can just cite them and take them to court, but we can't do any abatement issues on them. So we still cite them, we just can't physically go into the site and take them.
Got a question.
Okay, well, Counselor Crapp.
John, can you give me an update on 2710 Norris and also the Ironstone that we talked about last week?
Yes, we've issued citations to both of those individuals. We, one of those, the Ironside, I believe, is currently going to abatement in June. The one on Tip Top is the one we dealt with. The owner, we've spoken, we've been on-site with him, he's got a long case history with us, unfortunately, and we've started moving on. He's not, he's not the owner of the property, so we started to move on to the owner. So we started putting on the pressure on the owner to, to make the changes needed, because they're not, they're not the owner at that location.
Tip Top or Norris?
To.
Well, for the, the.
Norris is the yard sale.
Correct, yes. On that one, we've sent, we've sent inspectors out there. Like I said, we allow you up to about three days of the yard sale, and then once, if you're just out there all the time, then we, we move forward with that. So I'll give you an update on that. I just got back in, and I'll check on that one. But I know the one that we dealt with on Tip Top, we're at the point of abatement, and we put the pressure on the owner to do something before we have to come in and do something on them.
Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you, John, and I appreciate everything you do and how quick you respond. Wanted to ask you on the junk yards and the junk cars, I know we can't do nothing that's on private property, but if they're on our streets, we can tow them correctly.
No problem. What we've done, we've talked to Chief Born, and he's allowed us to, as soon as we slap the stickers on them, we can get them towed. So it's on our department as well as them double team that effort. So if it's on the right of way, we'll, we'll take it. Coldestack, anywhere, anything like that, end of a dead-end street. If it's on public right of way, we can get it. But if it's back in somebody's yard, that's, that's where we have the concern of getting it removed.
And I know you won't, I know you probably won't be able to answer this for me right now, but if you can just get back with me. In the Winterfield area, remember, we, I've been calling you constantly, there's some gentleman and his father who keeps putting them on the street and moving them to different streets so that we don't get to him. I'd like to know where we are with that, because it's ridiculous. We would cite them, they'll move them, but they'll move them to another part of the neighborhood, and then they'll move them again to another part of the neighborhood. And it's a father-and-son duel.
Yes, you correctly assigned that, because ideally, we'll say that you're violating on this street, and then we give you 10 days to move them, and then he'll move them to the block over, or he'll move them to the block behind.
And I want to know that if, you know, if we keep having that problem, is there something we can do to the ordinance to, you know, is there like an amendment or something we can do to the ordinance? Because he's just playing with us. He just having a good old time.
Well, we could potentially look at, you know, you know, surrounding that property if you're engaged in that type of business. I have to give it to the City Attorney, but usually what I do is I kind of see what other cities are doing based on enforcement ordinances that they already have, so we don't have to do so much heavy lifting.
I understand.
So we can, we can look into that.
That, that's a great part about having the memberships, and that was a great part. When we used to travel, we used to network, and we're able to, to meet different people and organizations and see what they were doing in their cities. But I just want to put that on your list to do, because I, I think it's about time we, we stop that little game that's been going on.
I absolutely agree with that, so we need to work on that. If they are moving a junk vehicle from one property to another to play games, we need to follow the vehicle and not necessarily tie it to the property. And, and the other thing I want clarification on, if a vehicle meets two or more of those criteria, that criteria, and it's in someone's driveway or in their backyard, we still cite them.
Yeah, we still cite them, we just can't remove it.
You just can't move them.
Yeah.
That's on the part. We'll cite you for 25 junk vehicle violations if you've got 25 junk vehicles in the yard.
And take them to court, yeah.
We just can't abate them, because like a lot of times, if we, we cite you for weeds, we can just remove the weeds. Or we cite you for solid waste, we can take the solid waste.
But we get it abated through the court.
That's correct.
If they don't do it, comply within 10 days, we take them to court.
That's correct.
And then it's, it's in the judge's hand.
That's correct.
At that point.
And can we, maybe can you do a little bit more research on that if we have a continual offender that does the same thing? I think it should be, you know, the punishment should be a little bit higher. Maybe we need to talk to our judges to say, this same person, Mr. Smith keeps coming every so many months, and to me, that's Mr. Smith disrespecting the law in the city, because he continues to do it. That means that Mr. Smith, I'm just using that as a joke, you know, then that means Joe Smith will just say, you know, I'll pay the $200, $300, who cares? I'll be fine, I'm going to make 500 later on something else. I think we need to make sure we put him out of business.
Okay. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. My thought was actually tying in with what Counselor Woodson was saying. Do we need to try to increase the fines, so that it gets so painful that they won't, they won't leave the cars there?
Well, the, I think that, in case of the fine, the judge has discretion up to a certain point.
Right. Do we need to change the point?
I'll let the City Attorney respond to, to that, but, um.
Detective Bowles, how long? I must see that.
Well, like we've said before, it's in the judge's discretion up to $1,000 for each offense, but, I mean, if you want to amend the ordinance to put in a minimum fine, you can consider that.
I think recently, there've been more cases, there've been more fines levied.
Correct.
Than there had in the past.
That's correct.
So I, I think we may see some of that start to reverse itself.
Okay. Counselor, Mayor Pro Tim, cue.
Thank you. John?
Yes, ma'am.
What about those properties? Where houses have been burned, and they're just there. They've been there over 12 months. And it's really affecting the rest of the neighborhood. Especially those houses next to the burned-out structure.
Well, what we do initially is we, we do get with the owner, and we try to find out where they're in in the insurance process. Did they have home insurance insurance? Did they not have home insurance insurance? What's the deliberation? We've had some people, we've talked to, and they said, well, I'm just taking the money and I'm leaving. They'll take their money and go wherever. We have some people that say, hey, we're deliberating about, you know, X, Y, and Z. So, but if it gets to a prolonged effort, that's typically the ones you see when we bring to council to you all, or those unfortunately. So we bring those burn structures, but then that kind of leaves the ones that's been sitting out for, you know, six, seven, eight, nine years that probably need to be torn down, but we just don't, didn't have the financial ability to get to it. So ideally, most of the times, if you see my presentations, when I do come to council, those burn ones are the first ones we put on the list. So we're working with us, fire EMS lets us know about, you know, concerns and issues they have, so we know when those, as soon as they're, almost the next day. So if there was a house fire in next place, this place, that place, they send us an email, we get the full report, so we can go ahead and start getting on them. And so we work with them, and then they'll say, hey, we're working with our insurance companies. At that point, we give them the 45 days, and then we just stay on top of them. So we're aware of them, and ideally, a lot of those aren't going to be coming down here in the next year with the initiative.
There's one on, is Taishe over there? Is Taishe over there?
Oh.
Taishe?
Yeah. Yes, she is.
The house I called you about, is that on Urban Avenue?
She's going to look it up.
Okay. Because they have a Home Insurance Association group out on Forest Road now, and it's been there. They're trying to stay on keeping their neighborhood clean. And this house apparently has been burned for a couple of years, and people are dumping, dumping.
3314 Urban.
So please check into that. And also on St. James Street, where's St. James Street? And this is like even the Citizen Services. People are dumping mattresses and clothes and stuff on, just on the side, side of woods. But they're putting it on the city side, so you can check on that too.
Now, I will mention one thing, somebody actually took me to task, as I said, if you, if you're willing to come out and testify and say that you saw somebody littering or dumping, I can't, my code enforcement officer can issue a citation, but I have to have you as a witness in court. So probably about a month ago, somebody on Facebook posted something about somebody throwing trash out of their window, and I, the same thing I just said stood. I said, if somebody's willing to come in and testify that they saw that person throw that trash out and is willing to come to court and do it, we'll, we'll move forward. So sure enough, the person called me and said, yeah, I'll come testify. We went out that same day, issued that person a citation, and they're coming to court the first week in June. So if, if the person is willing to come and we have that evidence, we'll go issue a citation. We ran the tag, went over to CPD, ran the tag, find out who it was, and we went to their house and issued them a citation for littering. So we will do it if we have that witness, because by the time we get out there, the material's already there, and we don't see a truck, we don't see this, we don't see that, all we can do is abate the nuisance or deal with the owner. But when we did that, like I said, we're willing to do it, we just, we just need citizens that are willing to come and be witnesses for it. So if they come out and take pictures, a lot of times in Lake Bottom, we get pictures of people putting illegal signs out. If you give me the, if you take a picture of the vehicle, and you have photographic evidence of them doing it, we'll run the tag, we'll go figure out who it is, and we'll go issue them a citation. So we've been trying to be more proactive in dealing with that, but sometimes, like I said, I wish I had more staff than what I have, but we'll, you know, we can use the citizen's eyes as much as we can.
Also, on Pierce Drive, I think it's Pierce, the street that the sickness, sickness house is on, on the weekend, some of the parks are trailer, on that street, almost every weekend. It's a real long trailer.
Okay, we'll get somebody looking to it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Counsel Davis.
Thanks, Mayor. Since we've got the whole executive leadership here, the administration of the city, and I, you know, I want to focus on Nightwind Court for a moment. The citizens out there are just at their wits' end. The fuse has been burning for a long, long time out there, and I'm just starting to get really concerned what's going on in this neighborhood. It's, it's just a constant, constant, there's constant, constant tension there, and it's evident that there's a retaliatory nature that's happening there with this citizen that's causing a lot of problems. My phone, just for council to understand, my phone rang off the hook on Friday, I've got tons of emails, it's just the stuff that's going on on this property by this individual. You've heard bits and pieces of it, but I just want everybody to know, we've got to come up with a way, I want to challenge the executive leadership here to less find new ways to, to deal with some of these matters, you know, and it, and I want to challenge you to think outside of the box of just increasing fees and fines. There's got to be something we can do to tighten up on some of these things. I mean, this, this gentleman at this, well, I'm not even going, I'm not going to use that word, this man at this, this address is causing a lot of problems. And, you know, for me to get phone calls that families now with children are seeing this guy sitting on his property defecating in a five-gallon bucket in front of everybody, that just can't happen. It just can't happen. And then, and knowingly taking action to disrupt city property, whether it's our disposing of junk and trash and things like that, and, and the culverts that, that knowingly is causing issues in the neighborhood, it, it's just got to, it's just got to stop. And I know, I'm, I'm really thankful to Director Hutchinson and his department, how they, they've been real patient. I think they, they respond every time the citizens call out there, and they've been calling an awful lot. Am I right about that, Director Hutchinson?
Yes, sir.
And, and I feel like personally that we're doing as much as we can, but doing as much as we can is not enough. To, to the citizens, they feel like they've been let down, that the city's just, you know, there's, you know, really not caring about what's happening there, and, and that's, that's not true. I know that. I, I know that we're doing everything we can, and there's, there's a process, a legal process in all of this, whether it's federal laws or state laws and things that we've got to deal with and timelines and schedules, all that adds up in here, but there's got to be something, we've got to find another way to deal with some of this stuff. That, that just can't happen in a neighborhood. That kind of tension is not good. You know, I, I hope that somebody doesn't get hurt, really. I hope somebody doesn't get hurt. But I, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and I know everybody in your own district, you have issues that you, you know, everybody's kind of putting them out on the table, but, you know, what can we do? Is there another level we can go to, or is there something we can do to tighten up and make, and more restrictions, because it's, you know, it's, it's not good to live in a neighborhood like that or a community like that. I'm sorry, I mean, you can't even, people being disrespectful for like that, that, it's hard to understand what is happening. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm digging, I mean, I'm reaching, I'm trying to find something to, to try to help these folks. So I, I just want to put that out on the table, it's just, you know, if we can find, I want to ask the administration, executive administration to put your thinking hats on and see what we can do to take this to the next level.
Duly noted, and, and it is, it's a, and I think we knew this was coming, that even after we took the house down, we knew that lawfully he owns the property, and he is entitled to certain rights. And you're right, though, we are going to have to look at some different ways to try to approach it, because it's tough on the, on the residents over there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Woodson.
Yes, I just want to make a quick comment to that, and then I'll go back to my question is, has anybody contacted Adult Services for the mental health? Because if he's being such a nuisance and under the nuisance law, if he's doing those things, then he's violating some laws where, you know, the court should take over, you know, over him and be placed in, in a place or get to his family member. Because I remember the lady that, I'm not going to say who, was here, and we were having the similar situation where Counselor Huff came out there and said, what are you doing here? You shouldn't even be here to me, and we got Adult Services to assist in his family to get him off the street, to get him. Every now and then, I get a phone call like you, the same thing over again, and we come, because sometimes the families have to be responsible for their kinfolks. You know, if they don't have the capability to do for themselves, then, and if they don't want to deal with it, then there are services out there. It should not be on them. So that's one thing, I would say that we need to really talk to Adult Services, our courts, to make sure, because I know of another situation where a young man, and he, he, he kind of did some things that his mom he shouldn't, and I continued to stay on her about it, and she went to the court system, and they finally, it's a long process, our court system can help. It's just that there are so many red types that they have to realize it's a nuisance, not only to the community, but the families also themselves, but there's something they can do with him, because if he's doing that, you're public nuisance, you're, you're naked, you're, you're exposing yourself. Come on, we have laws about that, regardless if it's on your property or not. You're, you're violating some nuisance laws, some mental health issues that need to be addressed. So just wanted to think about that and do like we did, we, we took the judge pictures and we said, come on and visit, and then you can decide, you know, what's going on. But we talked about John on another subject, we talked, hmm, can't remember when, I have some senior moments, I can't remember when, but we've talked about sometimes having code inspectors be out on the weekends, because I know that we were having some businesses that said, okay, on the weekends, the city's not around, so let's run our business. So Friday after 5:00 PM, they started their business, and Monday by 6:00 in the morning, they had stopped their business. I think you remember that one.
Yes.
And so I was wondering, whatever happened to that thought, or are you still in the process of looking at that?
No, it's still there. Ideally, we try to do it once a month, but we try not to publicize when that once a month is.
That's correct.
Because then everyone knows. So we've kind of had, unfortunately, we struck out with that for the last five or six months. We hadn't been able necessarily to catch anyone, so ideally, it's trying to make sure I make good use of my overtime pay and using it in the right spaces and adjust my schedules right. So we, we've done it from time to time, ideally, when, probably this summer, as it starts to become yard sale season, we'll be looking out for more things. But earlier this year, we kind of picked a Saturday or Sunday. We do it for signs ordinances, especially, we go out on Sundays and just, just clean up. But businesses per se, not yet, we're starting to get some. Unfortunately, it's, it's more of a, kind of a tattletale situation. You get somebody that's operating a electronics business online and didn't get a business license, and then they'll call on that other person because they notice that they're doing it, and then we go out there and verify what they're doing. So sometimes it doesn't necessarily have to be on the weekend, but we, we use anything we can to try to get ahold of them. We had one guy that was operating a transmission shop, and we knew he was doing it, but we couldn't actually catch him with the transaction of money. He ended up getting in trouble, he ended up, he ended up giving one guy a bad deal and gave him a bad transmission, and then he showed us his invoice, that he had an invoice that he had paid for this service. We went right out there and got him. So sometimes we have to play the long game when we're dealing with some of these people, because we, they know the rules, and so we're trying to make sure we can do what we can. But ideally, with that one, it, sometimes it ends up, people end up telling them themselves, and that's, that's usually how we're able to get ahold of them.
And instead of overtime, can we do like cop time, you know?
Yeah, we, we do different options. It's not always overtime, but yeah, it's just, it's just in the past, and like I said, even these last six months, we hadn't caught anybody, but I've got somebody working on Saturdays and Sundays, special assign people, so.
Okay, and not once a month, let's do it every other week or whenever, ever. I'm not going to tell. I think it's awful when the news tells everything we have, when we're at war. So, and right now, we're at war with these junk cars and these things, so I would say, you know, I'm glad to hear you are doing something on the weekends from time to time so that we can go ahead and try to catch some of these. Because I know there was one when we did the bus drive, that he was doing his business. Can you fill me up on that later?
Yeah.
While we are with him? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Crapp.
I noticed on 11 Nightwind Court on this picture, there's a for sale by owner sign down here, so I'll start contacting some builders, in fact, I've already texted one, see if they want to buy this lot. That might solve our problem.
Might be for sale by neighbor.
Yeah, there is a sign.
Mr. Mayor, are you done? Okay, he's got a few more things.
Okay.
He shakes his head out, y'all stopped me.
All right, uh, so some of the new approaches, we have our website now, which is up and running right now, columbusga.org/CCD, that's our, kind of our code case dashboard. So if you've got any questions about any of those properties, we can let you know the status of it, whether it's special enforcement, demolition, under the demo list, and then we have a list of city demolished properties that we have on there too, so you do see what other work we've done. So it's updated weekly, so if you click on it, it'll say if it's in violation, either we issue the citation, or, or they've gone to court, or it's under abatement. It'll give you all those different levels, so you'll be able to kind of track what's going on. A lot of people don't know addresses, so ideally, type in an address and try to figure out where it is, but if you just type in a street name, it'll take you to the street, and then you can see everything along that street that may be in violation. And a lot of them unfortunately are shapes on top of shapes, which means it's a property maintenance, we've got a demo case, we've got a prop, you know, we've got different multiple cases going on that same property. One of the biggest things, this legislative session was that the landlord retaliation bill, a lot of times, we had issues where tenants were living in not the best conditions, but they were afraid to come to us for fear of retaliation against the landlord. So now that they have passed this bill that goes into effect July 1, when we start to get those type of complaints, we can proceed with them, because they're not, they do have some protections. So obviously, the tenant, it must be a housing code violation, and we adopted the 2012 property maintenance code, so anything in there lacking utilities, water, lights, holdings on your floor, things like that, we can enforce. The tenant has to prove the violation, and that's proven by us going out there to verify it, and then believing that the complaint is valid. They're just saying they don't have hot water, but that's, you know, an issue, maybe something else we can work out. But for that, for that landlord cannot, for the next 90 days, three-month period, they can't file a dispossession, they can't immediately move forward with a victim, they can't take any of the use of the premises, or they can't change locks, anything like that, they can't decrease services to the tenant, they can't just all of a sudden go up on rent, and they can't interfere with the tenant's rights under the lease. So that does provide tenants a little bit more protection when they're afraid to call into us because of things they couldn't do before, fear of retaliation. And obviously, with Mayor Henderson's commitment to the million dollars for demolitions, we've kind of got our phased approach here. The intent is to start with the trailer parks, and we actually have some good news on two of them. We've been told that the owner is in the last stages of probating the one on Casita Road, Mr. Redding's property, that one's actually the last level of probate, so there'll be a new pile of returning that's ready to start working on probably about 30 of his properties. So that'll be the first week in June, so we hope that moves forward. The two far road, well, one far road property, 527, and the 4325 Old Casita are also potentially under new ownership, the new owners are trying to figure out how to get through, they've got a lot of red tape that they're trying to get over and get things moved, so there's potential that those properties may not be with us to have to move forward with the abatements. CPD concerns, ideally, I talked to Chief Born last week, and I said, any properties that y'all are having any issues with, that they're using it for stash houses, or any other concerns, any other, you know, 911 calls that have been made to those properties, let us know, we'll move forward with those. Ideally, we're going to move then to the half radius of any schools, try to make sure we take care of any of those, and then the longstanding houses. The intent there is to each one of you all's districts have some longstanding properties that have been there for a while that should have been torn down, and we just hadn't had the ability to do it. Ideally, we're able to save money on mobilization if we kind of focus per council district, so we can say, hey, each district, these are properties we've had that have been more than five, six, seven years, let's take all them as a group and ready to go. So we have two vendors that are already on our RFP list, and so they're, they're chomping at the bit, and once it's approved, that, that'll be ready to go. And that's it. Well, I have something else, but I didn't know if I want to show that now or wait.
Well, and Mr. Mayor and Counsel, obviously, John Hutchinson is doing an excellent job. He has a great team, and, you know, they're on it, and we're proud of the work that they are doing, and, and he's encouraged citizens to, if you see something, get engaged and help us out, if you're willing to come forward and go to court, you know, we'll take them to court, and you'll be a witness, and, and you'll help us out. And I might mention that I, you know, I, in the past, I've called them because I saw a bag of garbage, and they actually went through the, the bag of garbage, found the, an address in the bag of garbage, and they went to the person's home, and they cited them. And they did that because they went through the, the trash. And so they are going to do their part, and we just need all the help that we can get, and we think we'll send a message and get attention, and people will hopefully do better. So I think you've got a video or something you want to show?
Yeah, it's kind of on my good side, it's on my special enforcement and property maintenance side. On the building side, this is Building Safety Month, and so we've been kind of doing a rough pilot with a few builders around town. When we're dealing with, say, hot water heater change out, something fairly simple, something that you need a permit on, but just trying to coordinate with the owner and coordinating with the contractor to get out there on site is cumbersome. If we only have three inspectors and they're calling on the south side of town, somebody's got to get over there, and they get tied up on the site and they can't get to it, our permits will show that they're over 180 days, and they'll just be sitting there. And it's not a big extensive inspection, it's just got to be done so we can check it off and final the permit. So the last few months, we've been working with a few local mechanical contractors and hot water heater contractors to work out more of a live remote system. So ideally, somebody could call us on their phone with video conferencing, and we'll be able to approve the inspection, they'll walk around and show us the location of the house, go into it, show us different things on the hot water heater. So I do have a video I want to show, because we kind of, we want to get it put on CCGTV and kind of publicize it. it.
This person's a code, this is Bobby.
Hey Bobby, this is Kevin, this is Tom Lockman. I'm calling for that water heater inspection.
Okay, sir. Let me get back in the truck, and just call me back.
All right.
All right, thank you. This is Bobby.
Hey, hey, Tom, I'm calling for that water heater inspection.
Okay, sir. You, uh, you got your permit number handy?
Yeah, the last four, uh, dash 7878.
Uh, you have 7246, Soul Drive?
Yeah, let me see the address.
Okay.
All right, here's the mailbox.
Okay. All right, all right, let's take a look at the water heater.
All right, I just, it's on the picture, uh, electric, here's the tank.
All right, uh, can you go down a little bit, let me see? Go over? Okay, sir. Looks good.
Come up top. Here's my extension tank.
Okay.
Here's my shut-off valve.
Okay.
I got all my pipe insulated.
Is your TNP terminating outside the structure?
The TNP comes down right here.
Okay.
And the X is out, the building on the side.
All right, let's take a look at it.
All right. And here's my electrical box.
So, your panel's inside the carport?
There's the meat box right here.
Okay.
All right, and the X is out right here on the side.
Okay, cut 'em, it looks good. I'll take care of your permit for you. It's approved.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Correct. So, if we get called on something like that, it's a, it's a permit that's needed, but ideally, if we're, you know, on a job site looking at something else that's a lot more extensive, my guys can take a pause, go by and still approve that, because it's not, it's not a very cumbersome, you saw what he had to look at, but we just have to sign that off and check it off. So, obviously, the plumber can call in, um, as long as they have the video conferencing capability, Skype, FaceTime, whatever, and so we can kill two birds with one stone. Instead of my guy having to spend the gas drive all the way across the city, he's, he can still see it. We, we made him intentionally walk to the front of the house, so it's not a video recording. We make sure that's the house that they're at, you know, and, and we go from there.
Councilor House?
Would you say again the, the types of inspections you could do? I thought you said hot water tank replacement and roof.
Say you do hot water heater change out, um, uh, sewer cover up, so ju, we're just trying to make sure it's leveled and it's got amount of cover. So, we can do those, because a lot of times, let's say, if a paver's coming in over the weekend, and we can't quite get out there, but we just need to make sure that, that line is trenched and, and properly covered, we can, you, you can show us the tape measure right beside it, tell us it's got proper cover and depth, and we can approve it, he can cover it, the paver's coming in on the weekend.
Okay.
As opposed to waiting on us until Monday to come back to try to do something. Um, and for, uh, HVAC change outs. So, if you're changing your unit outside of your house, same kinda thing. A lot of the wiring and all that stuff's been done, you're really just reconnecting to what you already have. So, we'll make sure drainage, make sure it's plumbed and leveled on the, the building pad, and we go from there. So, we're trying to start at the simple things that we can try to knock out, instead of sending my guy all the way out to, you know, River Road for, for a hot water heater change out, he's downtown or somewhere else, he can take care of multiple things.
Okay, thank you.
Very innovative.
Mr. Mayor, there's a certain person that, uh, Red McDaniel used to refer to as genius, and so this is gonna be genius two. But, he's, they're doing great work, and creative, innovative, and things that, uh, obviously will make a huge difference in this government. So, thank you for your work.
Good job.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the final update, uh, is, uh, from Pat Beigler, Public Works Director, Facilities Report Card Update.
Good morning.
Morning, Pat.
Have I got the right angle there? Good. Just to provide a little bit of background, and this is just a report today. Um, we've been, and as you know, last year, we did a presentation on facilities report card. We've done an inventory of our buildings and done an assessment of those buildings. Overall, the condition hasn't changed since Lisa gave a, Ms. Goodwin gave a presentation last year, um, but we're continuing to inventory our infrastructure and assess the condition. Um, most recently, we've been focusing on air conditioning units, specifically the ones that contain R22 coolant. We've been looking at generators, roofs, and sprinkler systems, among others. Um, just a reminder, facilities has 31 full-time positions. Um, that doesn't, that, and several of these people are assigned permanently to specific buildings. For example, we have four individuals out of there that are assigned to the government center. One of those is not a plumber. So, we, uh, but we have, so we have a couple of floaters, and for the rest of the city, and then we have people assigned to the annex, to the government center, to the CSC, uh, to the jail, and to MCP. So, that takes a pretty good chunk out of the middle of this, but we have a lot of facilities to maintain.
And so, I will pause just to, to say again, so you have 31 full-time positions, and they maintain 670 facilities, 500 more smaller facilities, dugouts, pavilions, and 400-plus irrigation systems. 31 people.
That's correct.
And four of those people are permanently assigned to a particular building, the government center.
Actually...
So, we have four people taking care of the 300 and plus thousand square feet at the government center.
That's correct.
Four people. And so, you're doing an awesome job with the limited resources you have.
Thank you.
But, I, I just want that to kinda sink in, what you're maintaining, and how many people you have to do what you do. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and let me point out, plumbing is one of our most difficult arenas, and we've lost two plumbers. Um, so, we're running pretty thin, if you think about trying to cover all of those facilities with plumbers. And we are contracting a little bit of it out as we can, uh, but usually, it's small enough that by the time we contract somebody, we could've finally gotten to it ourselves. So, we are looking at that, um, and we'll continue to do that when it's appropriate. This is what we reported to you last year. Of all of our 670 facilities, 58 of them are all the larger ones and the older ones, and they're all rated at F. Replacement value is estimated at $454 million. We have 11 that are rated D, and 601 that are rated A through C. So, we're not looking at replacement costs on those at this time, uh, but those are mostly the smaller ones. The jail is aged, MCP is aged, this building is aged, the annex is not young, not this building, the government center, so. Um, now, one of the things we've looked at very hard this year is the use of R22 coolant. That was developed way back when as a non-flammable refrigerant, and for many decades, it was the only thing we used. Well, they discovered, oh, about 15 years ago, that, um, R22 was damaging the ozone layer, and had been identified as needing to be phased out. As of January 2010, no more air conditioners were manufactured using R22, and January 1, 2020, the EPA will ban the production of R22 completely. After 2020, the only R22 that will be available is, um, gonna be stockpiled. So, if we take an R22 unit out of commission, we will drain it if there's any coolant left in it, we will save it and reuse it. Um, but we're paying at this point about $900 a bottle. Uh, just to show what that costs, one air conditioning unit at the jail takes about 20 bottles. So, we'll be paying around $14,000 for one of those big air conditioning units. Now, we have 17 air conditioning units at the jail, four of them are quite large. So, we can talk, if they're leaking, of really substantial amount of money that we're spending. Um, we went and inventoried, now not all of the air conditioning units, only the ones that use R22. We have 271 R22 units still in use in 93 different locations. Now, there are a couple of 17 newer ones, but we're looking at over $5 million to ultimately, ultimately replace all of those. Uh, we are working on, uh, in this year's budget, FY19, we have smaller, the, four of the smaller air conditioning units at the jail is being, are being replaced with infrastructure money, OLOS. Um, and we're also doing a design for the three larger units at the jail. We're estimating the replacement for those is gonna be somewhere around a million dollars, and we're under discussion about where that money's gonna come from. But the design has started because we need to move forward. Um, one of the other items with inventory...
So, let me just pause there, 'cause on the replacement for the three larger jail units being designed, $1 million. Um, and I just, it came to my attention just late last week, that we're gonna have to have a serious conversation about that.
Yes.
Really soon, I think. I was told that Friday.
Yes.
So, I, I just wanna highlight that.
We've also inventoried fuel tanks and pumps throughout the city. Um, all of our fuel pumps are at Fs, except for a couple that we've replaced in the last, four that we replaced in the last few years. Um, our underground tanks, we have 12, they're all in pretty good shape. We have funding in the 19 OLOS to replace those fuel pumps. Um, let me also point out that none of our fuel pumps have emergency generators. So, if we have emergencies and we lose power, we will not be able to pump fuel out of those tanks. And as part of the project to replace the fuel pumps, we will be ba, adding emergency generators to each of those locations, so that we can continue to function during emergencies. And again, I'm using OLOS infrastructure for this purpose. Generators, been looking at those, and we've done a complete inventory. Right now, we have 33. There are locations that should have them that don't, such as the fuel tanks. Um, but, this is where we're standing right now. Um, the jail generator, which you all funded last year, that installation is going on right now, and is almost complete. We also purchased a generator for Public Works to replace a failed one there, and we will install it as we have time. We're also working on a maintenance contract to include repair and testing, so that our, all of our generators are taken care of routinely. Additional generators are needed, uh, at the fuel pumps, which I mentioned, at emergency shelters, that is, at the supercenters, and that should be included, or should be considered for inclusion in the SPOS, if we're replacing some of those supercenters. We do not have an emergency generator, generator at the fleet maintenance yard, and I'm sure that we could identify other emergency response locations where, uh, a, a generator would be appropriate. We look, we looked at roofs, um, got to the top 15, the ones that, the very, very worst. Um, all of them are rated F, and there are many more that are rated F, and replacement cost for those is about 2.7 million. We do intend to complete the inventory of all of our roofs and the assessment, and also the same with the air conditioning units as time allows. But with the staffing, there's nobody there who's a technician or an administrator, other than the person who takes care of all the work orders and all the payroll. So, um, the addition of the Assistant Facilities Manager, uh, if you all choose to vote on that in the budget, will be very substantially, uh, improve the number of personnel we have, and we can work on a lot of contracts that need to be put in place. Elevators, inventory our elevators, we have 43 in the city, believe that or not. Um, overall, we've got mostly, we're in pretty good shape. I've rated this amber. Um, none of them need to be replaced at this time. We've done what we can with the government center. Uh, one of the things that is important, though, is every, every year, we test the emergency telephones in those elevators, because you don't wanna be the person who gets caught, pick up the phone, and it doesn't work or nobody answers. So, we try to make sure that that is now taken care of annually. Building, building spring, fire sprinkler systems, we have wet systems and dry systems. We have Sys-50 in the city. Uh, we do have those under contract, and they're inspected regularly to meet all state and federal codes. All of our systems are rated A or B, and, um, the sprinkler system for the government center, which doesn't exist, is underway now. So, we'll be seeing correction there. Irrigation systems, we have about 450 plus. Um, we're in the process of doing, uh, a needs assessment and an inventory. We've pretty well finished the inventory. We're now going back and looking at each of those. Um, and one of the things we're doing is adding, when we can, as time allows, Wi-Fi controls to every one of those. So, if Saturday morning, the sprinklers go off in the middle of Broadway, in the middle of an event, we don't have to have someone drive in and get their truck to drive downtown. They can simply pull up their phone and turn that system off with a, with a simple adjustment on their telephone. We want to put those in where we can. We don't have Wi-Fi everywhere. We have sprinkler systems, but we will continue to work on that as we gain that capability. Flag poles, we have 144 flag, flag poles, and we've completed that inventory. Got all different kinds of flags out there, obviously. Um, some of them are managed by the building occupants, some by Public Works, some by Public Safety, and so, we've put together a list that shows who's responsible for what, for which ones, and we, uh, have the standard ones available at Splyhouse Warehouse now, so that any time an organization needs to replace a flag, they can come in and get it. The specialty flags have to be purchased by whatever organization is responsible for those flag poles. Well, in the case of the flags, are you talking specialty flags or ownership? Specialty flags would be, for example, there are some historic flags on display downtown, around in historic district, around where the old KCBC building is, and that's a Parks and Rec facility. And so, those are pretty special. They're not a standard US state, what have you, and so they would have to procure those particular flags.
Or, or the traffic circle.
Or the traffic circle.
Um, out, you know.
Yeah. Public Works is responsible for the Fort Benning flags, and, um, some of them are easy to, to maintain, some of them are much more difficult. Fort Benning, for example, you have to take a bucket truck if, if the rope breaks, and try to wait till it's dry, and take a bucket truck, uh, off across all that grass, so that you can get to it, so that you can fix it. And sometimes the delays you see are simply because we can't get in there with a bucket truck right away. Uh, but we do now have extra flags on hand, and we try to main, maintain those, so that we're not having problems and long delays. We've also established a facilities numbering system, which, um, I'll explain to you, but, uh, we've shared that with some of the general government departments. We're just rolling it out. We've shared it with the sheriff's office, and they're very excited. We've shared it with the sheriff's office, and they're very excited because for security reasons, they can, once we get the numbers on the buildings, they can say to whoever's calling, what's the number on that building? It should be adjacent to the door, whatever. And eventually, we'll also share that with fire and police. We are going to begin labeling buildings this fall, as time allows. Again, it's an additional task we've taken on, but we think it's important enough that we move forward with it. And we've established the system so that, this example, W is for Public Works, and there'll be only six or seven different codes, so you will know who's responsible for that facility. Five, we have six areas of the city, 5,000 is the downtown area. And so if you look at a number or get a call, you can have some idea what area you're talking about. 128 would be the building number. And that will begin in the fall. Future plans will include finishing our assessment of roofing, evaluating smaller infrastructure items. We've inventoried a lot of them, but we haven't evaluated all of them. And we need to do an inventory, an assessment of fountains, and establish who's got responsibility. There is at least one down on Broadway that I believe belongs to somebody else, university or downtown. And those are things that we should know almost instantly, not have to go look through records when something is wrong. So we're trying to get that taken care of this year, too.
Counselor House.
You mentioned the flags at Fort Benning. That jogged the memory on another issue. Has the entrance been cleaned, or is it being cleaned?
That is coming.
Okay.
In order to do that, to pressure wash it, we're going to have to shut down lanes of the interstate, and we're still working with DOT on a permit.
DOT.
Because it's going to require consecutive closure of lanes, over 10 lanes or more.
Do you have to close the interstate to put a bucket truck up or something with the pressure wash?
Well, what-
Or 280 and reach over the side?
Up on 280, reach over the side, but if you're pressure washing, there's a potential that chunks will fall off or something could happen.
Ah.
And you can't afford to have that happen-
Yeah.
-with traffic underneath.
That would be exciting. Okay.
So we're still working with DOT and hoping we can get it scheduled soon, but-
Okay. Thank you.
And I will say, it's fairly expensive, but it has to be done. And I don't know if the quote that we have is the final quote, but it's-
At this point, it's almost $65,000.
Well, I just didn't know if we should could reveal it, but it's expensive.
We have quotes from both contractors, so they're solid. I think they're good.
Yeah.
You may want to remind the state that we do have an international competition coming up, that people are going to be using that interchange.
Yes.
And if we can get that done in the next 30 days, it certainly would put a-
We'll push them and see what we can do.
Yeah. It's, you know, I mean, shutting down lanes, they've looked at it, and police patrol, and we've gone, they've gone through a process, and when they, and I see your look, the look on your face, when they brought the number to me, I had the same, very same look on my face, like, are you serious? And so, but they've gone through a process, and it just, I was outdone by the price, and that's why I wanted to share with you in advance. I mean, it's the Fort Benning, it's, you know, Gateway, it has to be done. It's expensive, and it's going to take a process to shut down lanes and hire security and to make sure people are safe and have someone pressure wash. So it took me a couple of days to get that look off my face, too.
Me, too.
But Mr. Mayor wanted to just point that out.
The traffic control is more expensive than the pressure washing.
Yeah. Traffic control is more expensive than pressure washing. So any questions? I think we wanted you to have the report card to know that there's a lot of work going on to keep pace, track, and keep things going in this city. Mr. Mayor.
Very good. We appreciate it, and thank you. It's a lot, man, it's a lot of facilities to take care of with a relatively small staff.
Yes.
It's crazy. Well, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas.
I have a number.
For Ms. Biggs, for the city manager. Mr. City Manager, I've had a couple of calls about the status of the tank farm down on the river, and particularly in light of the fact that in July, we're having this international competition, and it looks pretty rugged down there. Could you have someone give us an update on where we are in taking down those tanks and cleaning that area up? Not necessarily today, but at some point, what's going on out there?
Certainly. We'll get you an update.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Huff.
Mr. City Manager, if you would, it's that time of year, down on Liberty Avenue, Abundant Bridge. If it can get cleaned to heal and everything, they're starting to see snakes. They killed three out there last week.
Okay. Liberty Avenue.
Yeah.
Brown Avenue Bridge, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if no other questions, that concludes the city manager's agenda today.
Okay. Great. Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, Items 1, 2, and 3 are resolutions that's skews in Mayor Protem from the May 14th, Counselor Woodson from the May 21st, and Counselor Allen from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item number four is a resolution approving the recommendation from the Board of Honor for an honorary designation on existing street, 10th Street, from Veterans Parkway to Bay Avenue, for signage to reflect Avenue of the Arts.
Motion second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item number five is from the hospital authority. It's a letter from Mr. Henson advising of the selection of Jennings Chester to fill the vacancy of Jason Conlee. Needs council's confirmation.
Motion second to confirm. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes.
Item number six, this is a waiver of penalty and interest. Ms. Yvette DeLeon had submitted a request for the waiver of penalty and interest on properties located at 1900 Manchester Expressway and 4309 Woodruff Road. If the council recalls, Ms. DeLeon was listed on the public agenda. She's out of Texas and was not able to attend the meeting, and so she has requested that this item be listed on council's agenda for a vote.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, don't we usually have some input from the tax commissioner and everybody before we take any kind of action on this?
We do.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we-
They've been patiently waiting.
Thank you.
Max Patrick, Deputy Tax Commissioner of Property Taxes. Ms. Huff was here at the earlier council meeting and did present this. We presented it for her, not representing her, of course. But basically, the Ms. DeLeon, they advised that they had remitted payment for three checks in the same envelope for these, it was three properties at the time. One check was received by our office. That one was, of course, paid timely. The other two checks were never received by our office, and they did not clear her accounts, but they did not follow up, and obviously penalty and interest incurred on
What does the, what's the amount of the penalties and interest?
Just short of $1,785.20.
Is she current, did she eventually pay those?
In order to appeal, they had to come and pay those.
Okay, so, okay.
That's the law of the process.
So she's current on everything else?
Currently, current with everything, yes.
Okay. Counselor Davis.
No, I just said, I, you know, I had this confrontation with my wife the other day, and we were thinking about this, but it just, it's just so easy that the checks just didn't get put in the envelope.
Agreed.
You got one, and it hasn't cleared, I mean, you add it all up, I don't want to go down that road with somebody else because it's just so easy to request relief for penalties and interest here in a situation like that. I mean, it just, anyway, that's my position.
All right. Thank you, sir. There is no motion, so I think that conveys the message.
Mr. Mayor, she is requesting motion either to approve or to deny.
Oh, okay. Motion and a second to deny the refund of her waiver of penalty and interest. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor of denial of that request, please say aye. Any opposed? No.
Item number seven, minutes of various boards needs to be received.
Is there a motion to receive the minutes?
No, there's no motion to be received.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Just real quick, sorry, I know you guys are-
No, that's good.
-got a set schedule. My name is Ty Whitaker. I'm the Deputy Tax Commissioner here on behalf of Ms. Lula Huff. Just a quick little update, we were successful in getting our new motor vehicle software called Drives. We are going live today at 12:00, so my staff is working really hard right now downstairs to make sure that we do have a successful opening. Several of us were here on Monday, Memorial Day. I know we missed out on just a little bit of barbecue, but we just wanted to make sure that everything was in place and working just as it should. Again, if individuals want to renew online, that option is available. We still can accept payments through the mail, but we do ask that the public bear with us, you know, with any new system, you never know. It's not just Muskogee, it's the entire state that's going live. So there's not much you can do to prepare for that many people hitting a new system at any given time. So again, anybody who's trying to renew their tag today at 12:00, please bear with us. We're going to do everything we can to get you in and out of here, so.
And if you would touch, Counselor Woodson was asking that you just give a quick Reader's Digest version of what this update is now allowed to do.
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, we've been using a system called Gradus, that's Georgia Registration and Title Information System, since 1999, so it's almost as old as I am.
That hurts, by the way.
No, no, no. It was long overdue. We definitely need it to get with the times, and here it is. The new system is called Drives, that's Driver Registration and Enterprise and Vehicle Enterprise System, excuse me. It's long. With this system, it's going to allow us a lot more options as far as renewals. You'll be able to, well, a lot of e-services. You'll be able to cancel your registration online. You'll be able to get a duplicate registration online, see the status of your titles. You can pre-fill title applications, and it's going to make it a lot easier for dealerships as well locally and out of state. If you want to look up more information online, it's georgiadrives.com. Again, that's georgiadrives.com. If you want to get a better understanding as far as what exactly it is, but it's definitely going to allow us, especially within the coming weeks, to definitely move customers a lot faster than ever before because, again, the old system was somewhat dated, and our new system is going to be a lot more accurate. We will be able to locate your information using your name, address, partial VINs, things of that nature.
Good deal. Thank you for all your hard work. I know you guys did lose a little bit of your Memorial Day trying to get it all right. Yeah, we were walking, the city manager and I were walking in, we heard somebody say, well, they don't open until noon, and we were saying, who opens at noon? And then we remembered that, well, we appreciate what you do. And thank the tax commissioner for us, too.
Yes, sir. Will do. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Mayor, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments that are ready for confirmation for the Columbus Iron Works Convention and Trade Center Authority, Mr. Jonathan Payne.
Is that-
Did you, Counselor Woodson, did you want to do all three? We have next the Patient Fund Employees Board of Trustees, Mike Higgins, and we have Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Carrie V. Johnson.
Yes, all three.
All right. There's a motion and a second to confirm all of those individuals. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear the second. Who made the second?
Mayor Prochem.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye again, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're all confirmed.
Okay. We have some further mayor's appointments.
I've talked to two individuals, just waiting to hear back from them.
Okay. And that's for the patient fund. Okay. Now, we have council appointments that are ready to be confirmed on the tree board. We have Beauty Moore and Chris Henson. They may be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Counselor Huff.
The Beauty Moore, the one there out, did you call her? You checked in with her? She's good? Okay.
All right. There's a motion second to confirm Ms. Moore and Ms. Henson. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of confirmation, please say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. Public Safety Advisory Commission, this is Council District 3's appointment. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. We have the tree board. We have the position of Candace Wayman. This one is open for nominations. And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
We had a question. Counsel Dave City, Chris was not confirmed?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did both of them. Yeah, we did both. I'm sorry. I apologize. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. If we could, please, if we could go back to the minutes of various boards. It appears that we may not have taken a vote.
Yeah, I did think we did.
We did have a motion as second. If we could go ahead and take the vote.
We did have a motion second to receive the minutes.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then we've got Ms. Palmore, wanted to finish up, has three more minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
As I was speaking to you, Mr. Henderson, as the Public Safety Director-
Uh-huh.
-and the information that was shared in front of Mr. Richard Bishop on February the 12th, when you said that you would contact me between the- And I'm just very concerned about the communication because I realize that it's not going to be resolved by us not communicating, as if though, I don't want to think that you have no concern about me as a public citizen, so-
Well, I appreciate that.
So I would like for, when I come to the mayor's office between now and the end of the week, that you all can decide, you can decide, you and Mr. Bishop can decide when I will be able to meet with you. And to put it in writing, because I've had some trickery in the past, whereas I was told by phone to come to a meeting, and when I arrived there, I was told that there would not be a meeting. And so for the public to understand how concerned I am about this, I want to be able to have something in writing, and I want you to decide when we will be meeting concerning my issue that I've been presenting since December 2017. And today is, I want to make a correction, the 28th of May, and I realize that because of the holiday yesterday, you were not able to communicate with me, and- of the holiday yesterday, you were not able to communicate with me, and I waited until the 24th to decide to come before the public agenda, because I'm very serious about talking with you about the concern that I have presented. And I checked with the courts to see if I would be able to have a public defender concerning both issues with the public safety and the parks and recreation, and I was told, because I was not arrested concerning either one of these issues, I would not be afforded the opportunity to receive services through the public defender office, because, you know, I know that there is a statute of limitation concerning, you know, my concern, but I just thought maybe we could look at the facts and move forward. Thank you for your attention.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And for the record, I don't think anybody from my office has told you to come to the office-
No, I said, in the past.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not talking about-
Because if, if you call my office and try to schedule an appointment, they give you a date, they have my calendar. I'll be there.
Okay, but I want to receive it, if possible, by next Tuesday. That would give a week. When I come to the office, I just receive it in writing.
Just, just call the office, and they will, if you want to come pick up a, a written note of when the appointment is, that's fine.
Yes, that's what I'm requesting, that when I have next Tuesday-
Just call and arrange it ahead of time, and then we'll have it written for you.
Okay, by next Tuesday. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say, are there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.